Good morning, everyone. I am calling to order our regularly scheduled meeting of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Elizabeth Glidden, and I'm the Chair of this committee. And I'm joined today by Councilmembers Conno, Bender, Yang, Quincy, Worsami, Frye, Pomisano, Reich. And we are also joined today by Mayor Hodges. So, welcome. We are a quorum of this committee. And we have three items on our agenda for today, all our discussion items. The first item is consideration of appointments to our newly created Transgender Equity Council. And so, I'll ask Ms. Rivera Vandermeide to approach and give us some overview of this item. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. My name is Naria Rivera Vandermeide. Thank you for having me here. It is a joy to stand before you today and an honor to represent and put forward for appointment several members of our newly created Trans Equity Council. As many of you know, it has been a long time coming. The Trans Issues Work Group was formed in 2014 and since then really advanced the interest and the voices of our transgender and gender nonconforming community in the city. We are now in the midst of our third annual summit and planning our fourth annual this year, and that comes as a direct result of those actions approved by the City Council previously. Excuse me. In 2015, the council approved the formation of a transgender advisory board. And subsequently, in February earlier this year, we actually approved what is now known as the Trans Equity Council, or Transgender Equity Council. And so, today, we bring forward appointments. And I'll say that when we made a call for an open seat, there are several members of the council, the composition is, and I'm looking here of our staggered terms, I don't have it with me, but we have eight members that are community members, two of which are mayoral appointments, six of which are council member appointments, and then some of our jurisdictional partners. But I will say that we had over 71 applicants representing all 13 wards. It was extraordinary response, and I really just applaud the folks that applied and that rose to the occasion to be representative, to advance the issues of the transgender community. And with great pleasure, we advanced those names, or some of those names, today as we move this forward and formally constitute the Trans Equity Council. Today, for approval, are council appointments to the city's Transgender Equity Council that begin immediately and end December 31st of 2018. And I apologize if somehow I mispronounce people's names, as somebody whose names, that happens too frequently. Forgive me if somehow I misrepresented your name. But Nova Bradford from Ward 7, Seat 1; Maline Duda, Ward 12, Seat 2; E.J. Dean, Ward 12, Seat 3; Zim Porter, Ward 5, Seat 4; Nick Puchner, Ward 8, Seat 5; Freya Richmond, Ward 10, Seat 6; and two mayoral appointments to the city's Transgender Equity Council that also begin immediately and end December 31st, 2018; Natalie Crowley, Ward 7, Seat 7; Taylor Rose Payer, Ward 9, Seat 8. We also put forward one of our jurisdictional partners, and we're just formally waiting on approval for our other two, and so hopefully we'll come forward with that soon, but Elise Niedermeyer, who has been part of our Transgender Issues Work Group for the past year or two and is a resident of St. Paul. And so, we request she has been the person that the Park Board has forwarded for their representative. And as a resident of St. Paul, we request a waiver of residency as per our ordinance rules. So, with that, I put that forward for your approval and stand for questions.
All right. Thank you very much. I know the mayor was here and wanted to make some comments, and so seeing no one else in queue, I want to go ahead and turn it over to her to make some comments, and then we'll move forward.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Thank you for letting me speak. I want to say a huge thank you to everybody who is willing to serve on this council. I want to thank also the over 70 people who applied to be on this council. I think it is a testament to us as a city and a testament to this work that people had enough faith in it to want to participate, knowing that the work group as it was constituted, and to you, Madam Chair, and I know Andrea Jenkins is here, who helps lead the way on putting that working group together, and then to the council for this council, the Equity Council now. I think people saw that we, as a city, are dedicated to this work and have been willing to take recommendations from the work group and make them real. You know, I know that I've put investments in the budget. I know that there have been policy changes that have been made as a result of the work that the group has done. And so, that gave, I think, a lot of people, a lot of faith moving forward, that good things are happening here for transgender people, for gender diverse people, for gender nonconforming people, that we in Minneapolis, we love our community. We love our trans community. We love the people here. And that is made manifest with how we do the work together, and it's made manifest in how we make, you know, we use the levers we have at our disposal to work together with the community to make positive change. And so, at a time when the national level is incredibly toxic, incredibly punishing, abandoning GLBTQ people in so many ways, we, as a city, are saying, hey, we are here. We continue this work. We move ahead together. And we have amazing partners on this council who are willing to do the work, and there is so much more to be done that all the rest of the folks, great applicants that we unfortunately couldn't select, we will be able to partner and work together moving forward. So, thank you, everybody. This is just a great day for the city. This is official and wonderful, and thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Well, I just wanted to make a few remarks, just to really say thank you to those who made this possible, and really, that's the community members. I think sometimes the city does things, and, you know, this is where you kind of get the top-down language, and we kind of do something, and we hope that it works, that community embraces it. And I think this is a good example of where we really took a different approach, where it was community members who suggested how to start the work. It was community members who said, you need to start slow and make sure we get a good grounding in the city. It was community members who said, do an annual event so that we can reach out to more people and kind of build a better trusted relationship with the city. And we listened, and we tried to do our best as city government to listen, and here we are today with over 70 applicants for the very first ever Transgender Equity Council for the city of Minneapolis. And I want to thank and acknowledge the Transgender Issues Work Group, which was the precursor to this group that we are about to appoint today, and thank Andrea Jenkins, who was, without any question, the instigator of this work. I want to thank Philippe Cunningham, who was our most recent chair of the Transgender Issues Work Group. I see Roxanne Anderson, I believe somewhere, who is here in person. I just want to acknowledge these folks were able to make their time, and many city staff people, who I just want to say were very devoted to making sure that they could understand how they could be part of the work and better support community. Once again, I feel like we are relying on cities to get the job done when other levels of government won't do it. We are wanting to make this work sustainable. We are wanting to make sure that we are a trusted place for a community, and I think, and I hope that this is what will happen with this inaugural group. And I just want to say, the work isn't going to be easy, because you're the first ones, and don't be afraid to make this what you think it should be. That's my advice to the new appointees. And I just want to say again, I appreciate you stepping up for this first job. And a big signal that we want to send, we support all of our community members. We support transgender and nongender conforming community members, and I hope that we are trusted for being part of the work with you. So, with that, I'm not seeing any other comment requests. So, all in approval of this item, please say aye. Aye, opposed, that item is approved. And to folks who were here for this particular item, I want to say, feel free to get up and leave, because we have two other major items, some with community members as well. And we have a reception if you'd like to finish out your time socially together, or you're welcome to stay. Next, we have our American Indian Memorandum of Understanding, refresh for 2017. And we'll wait just a second to allow folks to exit. Mr. Rubidore, were you going to kick us off?
Chair Glidden and committee members, good morning. I am David Rubidore, Director of the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department with the city of Minneapolis. And this morning, I'm going to be presenting an update of the American Indian Memorandum of Understanding. I'm going to be co-presenting this with Joe Hobot, Dr. Joe Hobot, who is the President and CEO of the American Indian OIC, and is also the Chair of the Metropolitan Indian Directors Group. So, Joe will join me up at the podium. That would be great. So, we are also joined by a number of community members and community leaders that are in the audience as well. This is a very historic document for the city of Minneapolis, and there has been a significant community process that's been underway over the last year, per Council Vice President Glidden's comments earlier, that this was driven by the community and how the community would like to have the relationship with the city. So, the revision that we're going to be discussing today really was led through a community process for your consideration. So, first, directly, what we're requesting today is approval of the MOU, the draft, or the revised Memorandum of Understanding, as well as appointments to the formal work group that will be taking the work and moving it forward. The original MOU was signed really with the basis of building a better and stronger relationship between the American Indian community and the city, and has been the basis for just an ongoing relationship with the community and the city. It was originally signed in 2003, led by the Metropolitan Urban Indian Directors Group and also the city of Minneapolis. And for a little while after it was adopted, it started to languish a bit. In 2011, when the NCR Department was established, Neighborhood and Community Relations, we really had the opportunity to accelerate this work and bring this memorandum back to life. And with the council's approval in 2011, we reestablished the work group, and the work began to get underway. We knew at that time that we needed to do a significant revision of the MOU. It was already dated, but we also wanted to get the work underway, and so we started and continued to move forward with it. In that, we've seen significant changes in leadership, both within the community organizations that were original with the MOU, as well as within the city. We're also seeing a pretty significant change that has been occurring in the American Indian community, and I think Dr. Hobot will speak to that a little bit more. But we're seeing a much greater collaboration between organizations within the American Indian community, as well as new leadership around the Metropolitan Urban Indians Directors Group. And so, this really provided an opportune time to really revisit this work and to bring the memorandum up to a current situation. So, in June of last year, the Committee of the Whole set this work forward with approval of a process, really, to do an engagement with the American Indian community to revise the MOU. And that is what is before us today. I did want to point out, on the original MOU, that the entire council, all 13 council members, had signed it. It was a rather historic event, and that the community has held this Memorandum of Understanding in high regard. As you can see on the list here, some of the current council members were original signers. I will also point out that Council, a former council member, Robert Lillgren, who is in the audience, was also a big champion of this work and continues to be, and was actually a significant part of the revision that you will see before you today. I also wanted to highlight just a little bit on the community itself. The American Indian community makes up about 2% of the city's population, which accounts for about 7,700 people in our city. It is mostly located in Wards 9, 6, and 12, albeit, American Indians live throughout our entire city. We also have the greatest number of American Indians really located in the East Phillips Neighborhood. We also, for a city, have the only American Indian preference housing in the United States with Little Earth, which is also located in the East Phillips Neighborhood. It has more than, that represents more than people from 30 different tribal nations. And so, we have, it's a small community in the city, but it's a very important community in the city, and it's been a very organized and a very impactful community within the city. For today, Dr. Hobot is going to go over a little bit more of the details of what's in the MOU, but I did want to leave you with, before I hand it over to him, the specific action around adopting, in addition to adopting the MOU, is to appoint the people that will be representing the city on the work group. The way the MOU is actually structured is that there would be a minimum of five people from the city of Minneapolis, as well as five people from the community. The Metropolitan Urban Indian Directors Group will actually do the appointments, is doing the appointments, I should say, on the community side. On the city side, that is up to the mayor and the city council. We had, as I stated, five minimum on there. What's before you today is six, actually, from the community, and also six from the city of Minneapolis. I will say, the work around the revision and updating the MOU has generated a lot more interest in this and kind of an eagerness to be part of the new group. So, before you today is, the appointments that we're looking at would be Councilmember Alondra Conno, who represents the 9th Ward, myself as the Director of the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department, Craig Taylor, the Director of CPED, Community Planning and Economic Development, Gretchen Musican, the Commissioner of Health, Jean Ranieri, Director of Intergovernmental Relations, and Janay Harto, the Chief of Police for the city of Minneapolis. So, with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Hobot.
All right. Welcome, Dr. Hobot.
Greetings, Men Vice President, Members of the City Council. I will speak briefly about the vision of the MOU and the work that we put into it that led us up to this point. The majority of the work that was endeavored was to refresh the language, to suggest that the nature of our community is integral to the living, thriving nature of the city of Minneapolis, that our history is the city's history. And beyond that, we wanted to invoke the concept of Tiochepe, a Lakota term, that we are an extended family or community, that we work together in a collaborative way for the best results for all of our people. To that end, our community does retain some significant challenges as it continues to move forward, but we also possess significant strengths. First among those is our ability to recognize our own culture, to leverage that culture in a manner that is meaningful to our people, and to move forward in a collaborative, family style way in which our interests are supported in a way that does not define us in terms of the challenges we encounter, but defines us in how we tackle those challenges. So, going forward, what will be a part of the MOU is a state of the American Indian address and report that we'd like to present to this body on an annual basis. We're prepared to do that after the acceptance of the MOU by this body. So, we'd be like to come back and visit with you later this spring, to present that report to enlighten you about the work that we pursue, not only as a collective body, but through the various subcommittees that comprise the Metropolitan Urban Indian Directors Group. I would like to take also a moment, again, to second the recognition of Robert Lillgren and the inception point of this work a few years back. I'd also like to commend the working with David Rubidore, and of course, I cannot understate the importance and value of Christine McDonald, and her position here at the city has been absolutely integral in guiding this work and being a liaison between the city offices and our community. So, woplatanka to Christine as well. So, going forward, we are encouraged by the receptivity of this body with our community. We are excited to have such willing collaborators to work with us on moving our community forward in a leadership role. So, with that, I'll leave it to any questions that the body may have.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. And I just, I apologize. And I might just ask if you would like to introduce the community members who are here and support the agreement.
Absolutely. We've stacked the house, so...
I just wasn't sure all the different programs, so I apologize.
Joining me here is the Executive Director of Beegewind Community Loan and Development Fund, Monica Yell, and of course, Robert Lillgren from NACDE. We have Mary Lagard from the Minneapolis American Indian Center, Patina Park, the Executive Director of the Minnesota Indian Resources Center, who is also the Vice Chair of MUD. Koya Whitehead Artetopia is with us, and Don Clark, a fellow community member, all here in support of the work that we do. The rest are busy working, so we don't...
Right. Well, thank you. I just didn't want to miss an opportunity to kind of thank the folks who were able to come and the others who've been part of what's appears to be a really deep period of work to produce this refresh of the Memorandum of Understanding. The action that is before us today, I apologize here, is to, yep, and I will, just one second here, is to approve the appointments and then receive and file the presentation. So, I'll go ahead and, Councilmember Conno, I know I'd requested to speak. Maybe she wants to make that motion.
Thank you, Council Vice President Glidden. I'm fine with whoever wants to make the motion. I just wanted to take a few minutes of our time here today to acknowledge and recognize the valuable time and energy that all of our community leaders have put forward. We've been talking about this refresh for quite some time now, and it's really beautiful to see it come to fruition. And I just want to say that I work with a lot of different groups of people who are advancing projects and working on them, and I want to say to you that by far, this is one of the most highly organized, sophisticated organizations that I know has been putting a lot of dedication to advance and elevate the voice and impact of indigenous communities in our nation and in Minneapolis. And I know that you are that national model that so many folks talk about. And so, the proclamation of Indigenous Peoples' Day back in 2014, and the work that you all have continued to do to elevate that and ground it in community voice, has been extremely powerful, again, not only for Minneapolis and our state and our region, but also nationally. So, I just want to commend you as community leaders, who I know have to lift a lot of heavy burdens to get our communities to move forward, that our municipal work would not be half as impactful without you as active partners, who are also actively moving these conversations and convening people and raising money and leveraging all the work that we can do together. So, I just want to say that it's an honor to be able to work with you on these efforts, and I'm really excited to continue to support. So, thank you. And I want to acknowledge Christine McDonald, too, who's always at every meeting that I'm at with the community, and that's beautiful. That's exactly the type of Neighborhood and Community Relations staff member that we need. You're extremely visible, accessible, and connected, and I think that's a great service to our residents and our city. So, thank you, Christine.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Conno, for those comments. I know you've been very involved in the work, and also for the acknowledgement of all who have helped produce this. So, we have a motion on the table then to approve the appointments to serve on the American Indian MOU work group, and then to receive and file the refreshed American Indian Memorandum of Understanding. And just one last thing I want to say is, I actually, I really appreciate, too, the recommendation that we have a more regular contact with this group by having an annual reporting. I think that will be very helpful to make sure the city is staying in touch and in tune and understanding kind of how the work is progressing. So, I think that was a very important recommendation, actually. So, thank you. With that, I'm not seeing any further discussion. All approval, please say aye. Aye, opposed, that item is approved. Thank you all very, very much.[1411.51][1411.51](APPLAUSE). This might be the first time I remember that we have applause after two items in the Committee of the Whole, but they both are very, very significant items. And I will say, we're about to turn to another very significant item, so... All right. So, our third item is to discuss the city's Medicaid Plan transition in 2018 to self-insurance. And I'm looking for who is kicking off our present, okay, thank you.
Good morning, Chair Glidden and members of the committee. My name is Rika Stenerson, and I am part of the Human Resources Department here at the city. Today, we're going to be sharing with you the history of self-insurance discussions at the city, the advantages of self-insurance, our current renewal with our current medical carrier, Medicaid, and finally, our staff recommendations and timeline for implementation. But first, I wanted to just take a minute to talk about why this issue is important for the city. At $60 million annually, the Employee Medical Plan is not only the most costly benefit that we offer, but also the employee benefit that ranks number one in importance to employees. And that applies universally, not just to city employees, but survey after survey show that employee healthcare benefits rank as number one in importance to job seekers as well as employees. And in the current job market, the city is competing for top talent. Our benefit package is key in being able to attract and retain top talent in order to run our world-class city.
So, we have an early question from Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In order to understand how much, to dive into this for me, I need to know where our employees are on this.
Okay.
So, I don't want to hear a whole presentation, then hear at the end, our employees don't like it, or they're not on board with it. I'd be thinking about it differently, depending on where, especially the people who rely most on this, women who work in the city in particular. Where are our unions on this?
Yeah. And I might just say, in addition to kind of introducing who's here in the audience, and so then you can talk about the Benefits Committee, Labor Management Benefits Committee, but you might also say who else is here to kind of support your presentation, so we kind of have that context, because they have brought a lot of resources here, so that if we do have questions outside of asking city staff, others are here, including representing labor and so forth.
Thank you, Chair Glidden and Councilmember. Yes, we do have our labor partners here in the audience, and I see several of them. This is a joint presentation by Human Resources and Finance. We also have colleagues from Hennepin County who have self-insured their medical plan in the past. They're available to answer questions. I was planning to bring up the labor representative from our Benefits Labor Management Committee, Jim Michaels, to make some comments, and if you would prefer, we could do that before we kick off the presentation.
We can do that, just to kind of hear maybe more briefly, kind of where did the committee land on this and labor land on this. Mr. Michaels, welcome.
Madam Chair, committee members, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here, and thank you, Councilmember Goodman, for inquiring as to where the employees are at. Most of you have heard me say this before, but I think it really merits saying again. I represent employees and their unions throughout the state of Minnesota, and the work that is done by your Benefits Labor Management Committee in terms of collaborating between labor and management to solve very complicated and very expensive problems is second to none. In fact, it is a model that I have tried to encourage other cities and counties to adopt, and that's in credit to both the labor representatives, but also to our partners in the Human Resources and Finance Departments. So, again, I just want to reemphasize that that is something that we can all be proud of. I kind of, this being the third presentation, that I hope we get some applause, too, because it feels like Collaboration Day in the city of Minneapolis, which is wonderful.
It's a big item. We could applaud.
But, yes, but this, the work towards self-insurance is something that all three legs of our partnership, and including the consultants that we have hired to help the committee, so I mean labor, finance, and human resources, have been working on for five years, literally, to position ourselves, both in terms of the design for the plan, but also the homework that we've done in analyzing, you know, the benefits and, quite honestly, the risks of moving forward. And this is wholeheartedly supported by labor. We do believe it will be a benefit, a huge benefit, not only for our employees, but also for the taxpayers in terms of the savings that we're able to provide, and also the transparency. And I don't want to steal more from Rika's presentation, but I just wanted to reassure everyone that labor does support this. We have been at the table from day one, and we will continue to work together to try and make this a reality. And we're very excited that we've made it this far, and we're looking forward to the opportunities. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions now or as the presentation goes forward.
I'm going to ask that we hold on that so that we can hear just the full presentation. I think this is a good just level setting, so people know where different important stakeholders are at. But I appreciate we could hear the presentation, and then we are able to ask questions from stakeholders, as well as from city staff.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to mention Tony Kelly is here from labor, and he would like to add a few comments, if that's okay.
We see you, Sarah.
Madam Vice Chair and Council, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I absolutely support everything that Jim just said, and I would just add that we're excited to engage in this new direction, to take some control over the decisions that we make on healthcare, and to design plans that work for our employees based off of feedback that we hear directly from them, and to engage with our management partners to come up with something that actually realizes cost savings. I think it's a very exciting opportunity.
Thank you for that. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
It's, I will just say, this is a really big, I think, decision for the city, and so I think having a little additional questions, I can understand that. So I just want to be flexible, then. Thank you very much.
So, the city's fully insured medical plan, over the last decade, experienced significant cost increases. Many of those years, we had double-digit increases as high as 16.5%. To control the costs, the city and our labor partners, working along with the Benefits Labor Management Committee, took a number of actions, including plan design adjustments. For example, in 2014, we doubled the deductible, and that was after receiving a large increase on the plan and having to negotiate benefit changes in order to get our increase down. In 2017, we introduced accountable care organizations, which are the narrow network plans, and we had very strong enrollment in those plans for this year. We've also negotiated cost-sharing arrangements between the employer and employees. So employees, as you know, share in the cost of the employee benefits in the medical plan, and therefore, they are very involved with us in the strategy and in working through how we offer our benefits and keeping our costs as low as possible. We also have spent a lot of time developing a robust wellness program with incentives. We have a phenomenal 80% engagement with our employee population, which is breaking all the records at Medicaid. The Benefits Labor Management Group works very hard to come up with wellness incentives and strategies to engage city employees in their health and to provide opportunities for them to get educated on healthcare and to make better choices, and also to engage with health programs that they may need to better manage any of their conditions. We've also negotiated rate caps with the current insurance carrier. We've been with Medicaid for 10 years now, and they have been a very good partner for the city. The last two years, we were able to negotiate a 5% rate cap on our contract, which is why we were able to keep the costs predictable. One of our continuing points of frustration has been that fully insured plans in general lack transparency, and I think Jim touched on a lot of those points in his comments earlier. But it's limited the city's ability to assess our actual plan costs. So one way to look at a fully insured plan is they will predict what our healthcare costs are going to be, and then charge us a per-employee premium amount. And we pay that premium to them every month. If they're paying our claims and therefore taking the risk, and if, at the end of the year, our claims have actually been lower than what they predicted, they keep the excess, and it goes into their bank account, not ours. During the year, we have no idea how we're actually performing. We don't know until we get that next year's renewal, in which they tell us how much we're going to pay next year. So basically, we take their package as is. There's not a lot of flexibility to design the benefits you want. You have to use their pharmacy vendor, their wellness program, a lot of the built-in things they charge for, but we don't have a say in being able to take them out or add them in. So, beginning in 2013, the city started exploring self-insurance through collaboration with our labor partners and the Labor Management Committee. In 2014, there was a council resolution supporting the transition to self-insured medical plan as early as January 1st of 2015. However, at that time, while there was continued discussions and work, there were a number of obstacles, and due to the negotiated rate caps that we received from Medicaid for the 5% two-year guarantee, the city determined to remain fully insured. So as of now, we're in the best position since 2013 to proceed with moving to self-insurance. Just to talk a little bit about the advantages of self-insurance, the main one is cost control. Annual cost increases for self-insured plans have historically been significantly less than for fully insured plans. And our colleagues at the county are here. They would be happy to answer questions about their experience with self-insurance. We do collaborate with them quite often on benefit plans and talk about strategy together. So they've been excellent resources for us, as well as finance. The city will also avoid certain taxes and fees, including premium tax and the Affordable Care Act health insurer tax if we self-insure, and we'll be looking at some of those percentages later. The reserves, then, in a self-insured arrangement, would be retained by the city rather than contributed to the insurance company. So improved cost transparency will lead to greater ability for us to evaluate our medical plan design. Since we're able to select our own package of services and benefits, we know where our dollars will be going, and we will receive reporting on each component of our benefit plan, which is now, under a fully insured arrangement, very challenging to get reporting broken down into the services that you actually are purchasing. Self-insurance also allows greater flexibility with program design and administration. We can carve out, for example, certain services or programs to best-in-class providers and vendors. For example, pharmacy benefit management. If we determine that we think we can get a better package of services and price negotiated, we could issue an RFP for a new pharmacy benefit manager, and we would be able to select a best-in-class vendor that meets our needs, not that's just included with the carrier's package. Other areas that can be carved out would include wellness programs, disease management programs, or EAP, as examples. So our 2018 medical renewal, we received the 2018 renewal earlier this month from Medicaid. Medicaid used the 2016 city claims experience to project what they think our 2018 claims would be. Medicaid utilized an 8.72 annual underwriting trend assumption. This is the trend number that they used for all of their fully insured book of business this year. They don't give us a lot of information how they come up with their trend. We're just usually told what trend they're using. So they also included the retention components applicable to insured plans that are not applicable under self-insurance, and that, those things include a 2% state premium tax, the 2% reserve for Medicaid, their plan reserves, and then a 3.4% Affordable Care Act health insurer tax. So those are examples of the components that we would save going self-insured. Medicaid initially said that they calculated our rate increase at a 9.4, but they were agreeable to giving us a quoted rate increase of 7.5%. So that's what we are looking at for next year, 7.5%. We have contracted with Deloitte Consulting for our benefits consultants, and Deloitte has a lot of experience working on self-insured plans. They did work getting Hennepin County set up initially, the state of Minnesota. They work with Met Council, and they work with Dakota County. Our consultant is here, and he can answer any questions about the cost projections on a self-insured basis. They have a team of health actuaries that are very experienced in this area, and they all worked on this projection, along with HR and Finance. So the self-insured projection developed by Deloitte also used the 2016 city experience to project our claims. Deloitte used a 7.8% annual underwriting trend assumption based on their survey data, market trends from the other local health plans, and also the city experience. They included fees for Medicaid and the internal administration for all of our current benefit components. So everything that we're offering to our employees today is included in the self-insured projection for next year. They also incorporated a stop-loss insurance premium at a level of $350,000 deductible. This level of stop-loss insurance was reviewed carefully by HR and Finance, along with Deloitte. We looked at the last five years of the city's high claims experience, meaning claims over the individual claims that reached an amount of $250,000 each. So we looked at that to determine the appropriate level of stop-loss that would protect the city against any unplanned high-cost claims in the future. We also included the Affordable Care Act Pecory Fee, which is required of self-insured plans, and a reserve margin of approximately 4%. So Deloitte ended up with a projected rate increase required for 2018 of 5%, which is a savings of 2.5% over Medicaid's fully insured renewal. And that amounts to, when you're looking at a $60 million benefit program, a significant savings to the city, which is important for us as we look to develop the most competitive benefit package that we can, so that we are able to attract and retain that top talent for the city. And now I'm going to hand it over to Lori Johnson, who will go into details about our staff recommendation.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Yes, Chair Glidden, council members, thank you for having us here today to speak about this. As we said, this has been definitely a partnership with the Employee Labor Group's Attorney's Office, the consultant, HR, and Finance. It is a big decision, as you've referenced earlier. We wanted to make sure we go into this with an open mind, reviewing all of the information very carefully. We did not know what recommendation we would end up with when we started, because we needed to review the data, determine how it would affect the city, the employees, and long-term. This isn't a short-term decision, it's a long-term decision. So we took all of the data into consideration. And when we got that data, after we found out what Medicaid's fully insured rate would be, we are now coming forward with a recommendation that we implement a single-employer self-insured medical plan effective January 1, 2018. And again, this is based on research of data, review of claims information, looking at city exposure, reserve requirements, and the full gamut of how this will affect us. It was not entered into lightly. We really did make sure that we were very comfortable with this recommendation. One part of this, though, that I mentioned, is it is a single-employer plan, meaning that MBC and YBC will need to transition off of the city's plan, and that has to do with the insurance requirements outside of the city's control. So we are working with both of those groups on this. It's something that MBC was notified of back in 2014, that it would be pending, so it's nothing new for them. The Housing Authority has already done this, they transitioned off in 2015. We are making ourselves available to assist them with that transition, and we will be here for them as we work through that. So again, as we mentioned, we will maintain our current carrier. Medicaid will be the administrator of this self-insurance plan. The benefits will not change. Employees will not notice a difference, for the most part. They will access their benefits the same, they will use their insurance coverage the same. And that was really an important part to us, is that it does not adversely affect the As Ms. Stenerson discussed, we did purchase stop-loss insurance, both at an individual and an aggregate level. Those numbers were reviewed carefully to make sure that we had analyzed that risk. And as she said, both Deloitte and the city came to a recommendation that that individual's stop-loss be at $350,000. We're also building in reserves. Reserves are a very important part of this, because we cannot definitively say what claims are going to be. We need to have something to offset any large claims that there may be that don't fall into that insurance category. The 5% increase allows us to have a 4% reserve, or that 4% of that increase is going to go into our reserves this first year. We want to continue building those reserves. We'll go through more information on the components of the total reserve in just a little bit. The other part is that because this is a significant change, and we want to make sure that the council is aware of the financial impacts and the effectiveness of this, that we will be reporting back to you over the first two years and periodically thereafter. And if the council would prefer something other than that sort of reporting, we can certainly implement that as well. Moving on to the self-insured reserve guidelines, this is, as I said, an important part of our equation in moving to self-insurance. And I do want to say that those reserves, once we get them set up for self-insurance, are for that purpose only, so they will be segregated to maintain the reserves needed for the self-insurance plan. There are several components of a reserve, first being the incurred but not paid claims. So claims lag, and we'll go into that a little bit more in detail as well. So 11, or excuse me, 8 to 11% for that purpose. The other is a contingency reserve for rate stabilization. That's one of the main areas of having this, is so we can have more control, as was mentioned earlier, and also to cover unexpected poor claims experience. That's about 15 to 20%. And then reserve for unpaid retention costs, meaning if we were to end this plan, there's a little tail that comes after that, and we need to be able to fund that. We want to make sure that that is there as well. So the total typical target is between 25 and 35% of our total claims, so between $15 and $20 million that would be in that reserve eventually. As we mentioned, the claims are about $60 million, so we need to have a good-sized reserve to cover some of that. And that's built in with part of the premium that there's a reserve coming through. Self-funding and reserves. Again, there's the incurred but not paid claims. When you go to the doctor, it takes several months for your bill to come. So employees will be paying premiums effective in January. We will likely not be paying those bills until March or April. So that also helps build up a reserve for the payment of those claims. And then, as you can see, there's always that lag in payment of claims, which is typical with any insurance company, and in fact, sometimes they come well after the fact. So with that, that is our recommendation. There are two items that we're requesting on the agenda for action. One is authorizing implementation of a single-employer self-insured medical plan that should be effective January 1, 2018, and also authorizing necessary contracts to effectuate the implementation of the self-insured medical plan. And with that, I'm going to call Ms. Stenerson back up to talk about our timeline, and then to open it up for questions.
So our proposed transition timeline, April 28th, city council approval to implement a single-employer self-insured medical plan effective January 1st, 2018. In May, we've already started some employee communications just this week on City Talk in conjunction with this meeting. We published an article that the city was considering a proposal to self-insure, and then what that actually means for employees. May and June, we would work on amending the Medicaid contract to administration only. We started this work earlier in the year, so we have February through November, transitioning the MBC and YCB to their own benefit programs. We are already having those conversations and helping them with those transition plans, similar to how we worked with MPHA in 2014 to transition them to their own payroll and benefit plans. May through September, we'll be working closely with Finance to establish all the internal financial procedures. And then January 1st of 2018 would be the beginning of the new plan year. We would have open enrollment, as usual, during the month of November, and the plan would be that we're not changing the benefit offering for 2018, continue with Medicaid and the current plan design that we have today. So with that, we will take any questions.
So, and I'm using speaker management, for those who are able to do that. So, and I'm using speaker management for those who are able to do that. I see a couple tabs up. I think Councilmember Gordon was first.
Thank you very much, and this is certainly a lot to take in and figure out, and I commend everybody who's been working on it for so long. And I know that we have been moving in this direction slowly and carefully. And I'm, first of all, want to be clear that the action we take today, will this go right to the council meeting tomorrow, or will we take this up then in two weeks from, I mean, on Friday? Or we take this up two weeks from Friday?
So this was actually a question I had, looking at this, because was it anticipated that this wasn't touching with Ways and Means? That was the only thing that was a little bit unusual, and it's my fault that I didn't kind of touch that and touch base with Councilmember Quincy. So I think, my understanding is staff would like it to move forward, just so they can stay on their timeline, but I wanted to ask about that.
And maybe, I brought that up partly, if we all think it's two weeks from Friday, that would give us more time to maybe get a briefing, ask some more questions, think about it, talk to some employees, understand it a little bit better. So why don't we think about that while I ask my other questions? Another question I had was, has there been any discussion at all about moving the Building Commission or the YCB, the Youth Coordinating Board employees, to be either city or county employees? It's just, when I'm looking at it, we have the county, the Building Commission, for example, all the money comes from either the city or the county for all of them, and it's a shared effort. If we see that there are savings that we get by being self-insured, either the city and the county, why don't we find a way so that those savings could also go to pay for the insurance for the Building Commission? And the same with the Youth Coordinating Board, even though some of those funds come from the schools and the parks as well. Has there been any effort or discussion to move in that direction?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Gordon, I'd like to ask Susan Trammell, our benefits attorney. She was, I believe, involved in similar, or Susan Siegel.
With regard to the Municipal Building Commission, we would need a change in the state statute. And with respect to the YCB, that would be, it's a joint powers entity, so there would need to be some kind of modification to the joint powers agreement. I know, and you can talk to us more, there's been a lot of support for those two entities in terms of how to proceed.
So, I'm chair of the YCB, and so if there's some good information that might give us some guidance in terms of if this is something we want to explore, we could certainly, I could test the waters in terms of the other jurisdictions, if there'd be any interest in doing that. So I'm not sure, but I'll put that out there. And I don't know if that would be a big problem with your timeline and everything, it could, I'm sure we could, something to think about anyway. I'm also curious about, when it says maintain the current carrier benefit plan and design, and I think you all tried to talk about this, acting like there'll be absolutely no change when we make this transition. So we all had to sign up for a new clinic plan. Last time we did this, every year it seems like we have to sign up for something else, primary and clinic and network and whatever they're calling it at the time. So when 2018 rolls around, are we going to have to re-sign up with some other kind of plan, or clinic, or primary provider? Are we just going to seamlessly be going to our same clinics and family members and physicians?
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Gordon, good question. Some of those details we will need to work out prior to open enrollment, but typically during open enrollment, we do what is called a positive open enrollment, where we want everybody to go in and make a new election. But the plan for 2018 is to continue offering the same networks that we are currently offering today, although we don't have total control over network changes that may be made outside of the city. So there could be some adjustment in, for example, those ACO network plans. But that information will be well communicated in advance, and we, you can be assured, we work very closely with the Labor Management Group on benefits. We meet on a monthly basis, and we are planning and sharing that information well in advance.
Okay, so it sounds like it'll be just about as disruptive as it is every other year.[883.36][883.36](Laughter) Or non-disruptive. So another question is about purchasing this stop-loss insurance, and it says we're going to be purchasing individual stop-loss insurance, and so the city then on individual employees' behalf will be buying a separate insurance, paying for a separate insurance policy for catastrophic problems? And what does that mean, I guess?
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Gordon, I am not a stop-loss expert, but it, maybe I should ask our Deloitte consultant to come up and talk about purchasing stop-loss.
Let's use the team where we.
Yeah. This is Josh Johnson from Deloitte.
All right, Ms. Johnson, thank you.
Councilmember Gordon, stop-loss insurance is a group policy. So what the city would be purchasing, the individual stop-loss is a group policy with an individual deductible of, in this case, $350,000 per person. So for each person that's on the plan that would exceed that level, they would be, the city would be reimbursed from the one group policy. And then there's also aggregate insurance. So if total claims are 125% of the expected level, the city would be reimbursed for that too. But it's all group policies that the city would purchase, not a policy.
So not an individual item we'd see on our page or anything like that? Okay, thank you very much. Then I just had one last question about paying claims. So the way it would work when we're self-insured is somebody in the finance department would be writing a check to various clinics, doctors, and hospitals to pay all our claims? Or are we still going to be working through a big insurance entity, and they will be distributing the funds?
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Gordon, we would not be writing checks directly. We would be hiring Medica as our third-party administrator, and they would be paying the claims as they do today. So we would have our funds set up, and they'd be pulling money from us to pay those claims, but they would be administering just as they do today.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman, I think, was next, and then we have a few.
Just a quick question. Yeah. We've been talking about this in the city for a long time, but I'll just put myself in the shoes of an employee working as an administrative assistant in a department somewhere in the city. What they want to know is not about stop-loss insurance. They want to know, how will this affect me? So perhaps you can touch on the, how will this affect me? Will people be able to choose Medica still? Will they able, people hear self-insurance, and they think like, the city is setting up a hospital, and we're going to be going to that hospital. So I think it's important, in the context of this conversation, to bring it down to the level of, how will it affect me? And that maybe could then make people feel better, that they don't need to worry about the high-level detail of how it's going to be paid for, but how will it affect them?
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Goodman, yes, that, we have heard that concern from employees. It's a very hard concept for employees to understand. It's not something that's typically discussed. But for the most part, this change would be invisible to employees. If you were to ask an employee at Hennepin County if they know if their plan is fully insured or self-insured, they would have no idea. It's simply the financial arrangement that happens behind the scenes. However, most people are asking already about 2018, and for 2018, for that reason, we have worked very hard to make a plan to transition without any changes to our current arrangement. Because we offered those new accountable care organizations in 2017, and we made some changes to our wellness program, we want to maintain that momentum and engagement that we currently have. So we are planning to offer exactly what we have today, next year, and the only thing that's going to have to be worked out is the cost-sharing piece with labor on behalf of, you know, what the city will pay and what the employees pay with that overall 5% increase. Does that answer your question?
It does, and I think it's really important that we communicate this to the workforce as soon as possible, rather having a news bites thing, saying, city moves to self-insurance, which should say, city moves to save money for employees, health insurance plans remain the same, or similar. I mean, I was asked about this in my office. My, you know, employee of 15 years and I, who have been together, gave me the PowerPoint and said, should I be worried about this? So I think it's important for us to remember, this is the single most important benefit to most people, and we need to express to them how we can bring down the level of anxiety. I'm sure Hennepin County went through this exact same thing, and we should learn from them as to how do we communicate this. It's not only up to the unions, it's up to the leadership of the organization, which means all of us.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Palm, excuse me, Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say a few things as we were looking through this. This has been a process for several years, and we probably were in a position that we would have considered this several budgets ago, except for the renegotiation with the agreement with the insurance company that said there wasn't a financial incentive. So I'm really pleased that that gave us some financial assurance, that we could still conduct business in the city and have the insurance benefit that we all expect and rely on, but also gave us a more thoughtful time and process to really investigate what the benefits would be. So I'm very pleased with that. I'm also very excited about how our departments work together on that, especially when we crossed the plaza and used our jurisdictional partners with the county as a great guidance. So in general, I think the process has gone very well internally. And now it comes to the point of, what are we saving? What are we doing? And I'm just cautious when I see something that says we're going to save 2.5%. I just want everybody to understand, what we're really doing is avoiding a 2.5% increase. We're not going to be able to use these monies like, oh, suddenly we can reduce our property tax levy 1%, which is basically what it comes down to, or something like that. What we can do is we can say, we're avoiding adding our increase in property taxes 1%. That's really important. We need to retain these kind of savings within the city so we can make sure that we have a sustainable benefit plan going forward. And this particular approach seems to really address the concerns that Councilmember Goodman certainly eloquently outlined from an internal employee benefit point of view. And from a finance perspective, this is saying, this is a solid, good financial business decision. This comes from experience, it comes from great consulting work for Deloitte, thank you for that, and partnerships with the county, as well as our internal relationships. So I think that we're at a point, now it's just saying, now I'm asking some really detailed question, like, does this affect what we have to hire and staff for? Is this changing how we're going to do business within the city for administering these plans? Are we going to have to have new employees, and what cost is that, for example?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Quincy, in Deloitte's experience, implementing self-insurance usually results in around another FTE or less to set up some of the financial procedures that would be changed from what we currently do. So built into the costs of our projected claims is the cost of one additional FTE that we would figure out between HR and finance to allow us to set up the procedures we need to administer.
Okay, good. Very comfortable with that. I mean, certainly a benefit, we want to have that internally controlled, and we want to make it appropriate. I was just making sure we weren't going to add a staff of, like, suddenly 20 people to save much money, and it's going to actually cost us more money to operate that way. So I'm very pleased to hear that. I guess that's my big questions. I was certainly an advocate of this program, certainly a tremendous appreciative of the support and collaboration between the departments and our jurisdictional partners that helped bring this to a position. Now I think we're going to the process of it, and that I'll yield to Council Vice President because this department reports to the Committee of the Whole. And this is a big internal conversation that we're having at Committee of the Whole, totally appropriate from a policy point of view. Now we get to the details of, should this be referred back to Ways and Means in the following cycle? And I think the impact of that needs to be addressed, if we're going to slow things down, or if we should follow our existing process. But I'm pleased to have all this information, and I think we've had the opportunities to have briefings from staff if there's been specific questions. So I don't want to hold up the process if that's an issue, but I will yield to the Vice President on how she'd like to handle that question going forward. Thank you.
All right, I have myself in queue, and I had a comment, and then I had a couple of questions. So the comment was really in response to the question that was posed by Councilmember Gordon about whether there should be some discussion with the Youth Coordinating Board. And I'll just, I also used to be chair of the Youth Coordinating Board, I'm very familiar with it, and I do not support pausing this process to explore that. I mean, just, it is a big conversation. It's a conversation with multiple jurisdictions. The whole point of the YCB is that the city isn't just expanding its own programs to serve youth, which we do have, you know, that ebbs and flows with different budgets, but how we coordinate together with the other jurisdictions, which is the point of their cost-sharing also to the YCB. So I just wanted to say, I do think that's a much bigger question than what we would be able to allow time for, and I don't support pausing the process for that, for those reasons. I had a couple of questions. One is, I just, maybe I kind of lost myself in the presentation a little bit, but can you go back and say, why are we confident that the 4% number is okay for year one? Because I thought, anyway, just maybe address that, or I don't know if that's Ms. Johnson's question to address. I'm asking you also.
I can certainly start, but I think that's one that perhaps Deloitte could address as well.
Okay.
We know that over time this reserve has to build. We start with a lower stop-loss.
Right.
So that we have less risk, therefore a smaller reserve can handle that. Hennepin County, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe their stop-loss, individual stop-loss is a million and a half. So we're starting at $350,000, allows us to have a smaller reserve. But we are going to build that reserve, and that stop-loss insurance is going to go up as we are able to take on those claims, because then we pay less. Stop-loss premium is very expensive, so we weigh those, all three of those items, and that's how we come to that.
So that's kind of the answer. And I appreciate any comment you want to make on that, but it sounds like she laid it out, yeah.
Right, Madam Chair. Yeah, I mean, sound actuarial projections, based on the last, the most recent 12-months claims, are actually projecting the increase in claims and total cost to be less, so 1.5% or so. There's room in the budget or in the projection to put in an additional 4% and still be at an acceptable level. And especially in the first year of a self-insured program, as much that you can set aside for that reserve is recommended, to be conservative, to try to build that up.
Thank you. So my second question was kind of more just, I guess, tea-leaf reading a little bit, but, you know, there is a lot of talk about changes to the Affordable Care Act at the federal level. Who knows if that happens or it doesn't? But how would changes, how are we looking at whether that has impact on what we're trying to set up with self-insurance, and what risks are we trying to plan for? I mean, again, we don't know if there will be changes, or what those changes might be, but I just think it's a big environmental factor. I want to know how we're looking at that.
Chair Glidden, that's something that we are keeping our eyes on, on a daily basis, along with everybody else in the industry. I wish I had a crystal ball to see what is going to happen, but from our review of our current situation and the fact that there have been no changes coming to the Affordable Care Act as far as the taxes and fees that are currently in the required of fully insured plans, it looks like this is a good year for the city to self-insure, because we will have that savings there. I don't know if you have any, there's, we talk about it constantly, and we are watching for that. The Benefits Labor Management Group is also very well aware and very well-versed in those requirements that go along with the ACA, and we have a lot of reporting responsibility and compliance things that we do because of that act, so we are all anxiously watching to see what will happen.
Okay. And I guess part of what I'm thinking about is, are there additional financial consequences that are significant, or are most of the changes, not the kind of changes that would have major financial consequences for insurers like ourselves?
Chair Glidden, some, I wouldn't say they're significant financial, but right now we do have staff allocated for the reporting requirements, and we have to do a lot of systems work to produce the 1095 statements that go out. So if there are changes to that employer reporting, that will help us, it will actually create additional money that would go into the reserves that we would have bucketed right now for plan administration.
Okay. So then I had one last question. And I will say, I feel like people are kind of asking a mix of the financial questions they would ask in Ways and Means, so maybe we'll just kind of see where we're, you know, at. But so my other question was, and this may be kind of appropriate. So my other question was, and this may be kind of apropos of nothing, but, so, we already are self, we're self-insured, so we have an account, and we kind of have this mechanism, I think, where you kind of assess the claims that might be produced by different departments, and that's how they have to kind of pay into the self-insurance account. How will this be set up kind of in relationship to that fund? Is there any relationship we need to understand? Or are you going to look at each department, and kind of they have to, you know?
Chair Clinton, Councilmembers, we are going to set up one self-insurance fund to not look at it department by department. This is a citywide program, so we will have those.
I don't, I understand they're not department-by-department funds, but my underst, well, anyway, maybe you just.
So maybe I'm missing the intent of your question. Did I, can you explain?
Yeah, can you?
So when we, when we, my thought was that there's a structure where we charge different departments based on the assessment of their likelihood to produce claims, you know? And, right? And so anyway, that's kind of how we set up that self-insurance fund, and I guess my question was kind of how this will affect the departments and their ability to kind of understand their costs? Is it kind of combined together in one big self-insurance thing, or it's held separately because it's just for our health insurance, or?
It will be, Chair Clinton, it will be held separately, and now I understand your question relating to budget. We budget based on a per-employee premium monthly versus the claims incurred, so it's a little bit different than what we do on workers' compensation. Where this is, you pay a monthly premium, and your claims will be paid by Medicaid. We will continue that process and that type of budgeting versus anticipating a department's claims, because it won't have anything to do with that. It will be by employee, by month, similar to how everyone pays premiums right now.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Just got, lost where everybody was. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. You know, since Hennepin County is here, I'd like to bring him up and ask him a couple of questions, and I will hopefully just be really quick about these. First question is just with regards to the experience of Hennepin County. What were their savings initially?
Chair Clinton, Councilmember Yang, I'm Dave Lawless, the CFO for Hennepin County. With me is Michael Rossman, our HR Director, and Bruce Anderson, our Benefits Manager. I would also note that the three of us are city residents, and we're excited that the city's taking this opportunity to save some money.
All right.
We actually saved quite a bit of money the first several years we entered into this. We, and the way we, I would describe that is, for the first four years, we had three years where we did not increase premiums, and we had one year where we increased them 2%. We're now probably on a cost run that's a little bit higher and probably more to market, but the savings of these taxes is a very substantial piece. Also, the transparency that you are getting from your health insurer, I mean, at the end of the day, you know, they're in business to make money, and so they will, you know, save the money at the end of the year. They're not sending you a rebate on that. Also, one of the other pieces that comes out of this is related to the pharmacy programs. You end up with rebates that flow back to you rather than going to Medicaid and so on in terms of how your pharmacy benefit is set up. So we've been very happy with this. We generated a lot of savings the first couple of years, built up reserves, and I think, as was described to you, we have much higher limits on our coverage, and so therefore, we have saved money on that also. But we did start a little more conservatively, similar to what the city staff is recommending to you.
So, you know, in terms of the savings, you know, I've heard in the millions of dollars, like, over $10 million, I mean, is that even like, within the realm of possibilities?
I think it's well over $10 million.
Okay. Wow, being very modest here.
Our program, our program is, you know, we, you know, your discussion here is about a $60 million spend. We spend about $100 million a year on insurance. We have a larger employee population.
Okay, so over a $10 million savings. Could I ask you, just with regards to your experience, I mean, what were the lumps that Hennepin County, you know, suffered in the first couple of years, or several years with regards to self-insuring?
What losses did we have?
Were there any lumps, like, you know, bad experiences, or things like that?
We had a few transitional changes, in some cases, individual employees, since we are changing our pharmacy benefit, we had employees who had to get new prescriptions from their doctors, and I would describe those as inconveniences rather than, you know, significant problems. But that is the type of situation we had. We had a few cases where, as we also changed the networks we had, that some employees had to change doctors. We had a few circumstances where somebody thought that doctor was covered under network but was not, and in many cases, that was, you know, something where the HR folks could get involved and tell the third-party administrator, that's okay to pay that, we think that's the appropriate thing for the employee to do. I mean, it really brings some of that control back to the city rather than it being just a third-party insurance company. I don't think you want to give everything away to all your employees in those circumstances, but you do want to, you know, make the decisions that seem appropriate for the employees and what's fair.
Okay. And, you know, another question with regards to just, you know, your experience, I mean, any lessons that you learned that you would have done differently?
I don't think we would have done much differently. I mean, I think, you know, communication's always a challenge. I do think the concerns that employees are concerned that this means some major change for them. I think today, most of our employees would say it was relatively invisible for them. At the end of the day, they're still signing up for insurance, they go to the doctor within whatever network they're in, you know, and then the bill is generally paid by our third-party administrator, and that's how it happens.
Thank you. Thank you.
Council President Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Denison, do we, so we would use Medicaid as our administrator, then do we, on a routine basis, do we go out and ask if other people are interested in being our administrator?
That's correct. We are required to go out for RFP every five years, and currently, we have two years left on the five-year potential contract with Medicaid. So for 2018, we have definitely made the commitment that we will stay with Medicaid and recreate our current benefit offerings. And then for 2019, that would be up for discussion, whether we do an additional year or look at RFPs.
Okay, all right. Madam Chair, thank you. Just, I really want to say that I so appreciate all the work that's been done on this with staff and then our Benefits Labor Management Committee, and not just this program, but the work that's been done over the years to keep healthcare costs for our employees at a rate that other people envy. And it may be complicated, this last year, when we had this choice of the Affordable Care organizations, it's, our premiums are, would be the envy of about 90% of the people out here in the community. And so I think, again, the groups that have worked on this, because it has saved the city millions and millions of dollars over the years in a hugely challenging environment of healthcare costs. And it's the good work of everybody that's worked on these plans that's let us keep our budget fairly reasonable for our healthcare costs when others, other employers have exponentially seen their, seen their costs increase. So thank you all very, very much.
Councilmember Palmisano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lots of things have been pointed out, so let me try to only say new things here. One is, there's a lot of advantages to this, and one of them is that it really builds our resiliency as a city. We won't be beholden to fully insured offerings anymore, to prepackaged deals that are pharma plus benefit plans. And like Mr. Kelly mentioned, that means we can really start to tailor it to the needs of our employees, which are kind of unique as a city because of the many different ways that we work as a city. We're, we're well beyond that threshold where, in terms of size, that this kind of thing, looking at self-insurance makes sense. And I would say, instead of my colleagues seeing it more like we're becoming our own insurance company, we're really more becoming like, like a bank, like a fund that this operates out of, and that, and third-party administrator continues to be our agent and continues to provide a pretty seamless thing to the employee. I've been in the private sector on these kinds of ASO plans. It doesn't seem any different, doesn't act any differently to the way fully insured plans work. I used to work in the health insurance industry. These are pretty common, especially for something our size. So I've been really encouraging of this for a few years, and I know that the more, that members of our council that have more seniority here have been working on it as well. One of the things that I want to mention in terms of the safety of doing this is that we're building our reserves here, and that's good, and we're still seeing cost savings, and that's really a step in the right direction. I really like that you have in your presentation that you'll be providing updates for this back to councils, so that as things change over time in our regulatory environment, we can, we can continue to adjust or see if there's a different direction we can go. I want to thank this whole team for staying engaged with me. I had probably the most questions here a few years ago, and over the last couple of years, you've met with me pretty regularly, and you've made me really comfortable with, with your readiness to go. I also so appreciate the county's involvement. I think we should work closer with the county. We're right across the street, and they have a lot of things to share about, about their employees, and perhaps we have something to add to them, too. The one short question that I have is, will Deloitte continue to serve as our actuaries here? Something mentioned before by Councilmember Quincy was that we're not, we're not building out our own department, really, but will we continue to procure actuarial kinds of looks and services as a city?
Chair Clinton, Councilmember Palmisano, yes, we do have a contract with Deloitte where they will be serving as our benefits consultant, and we just entered that arrangement this past year, so they will be working with us on a go-forward basis.
Terrific. So I just want to say, this has been a really long discussion, and I want to thank you all for staying with this initiative, because it's really some of the good work that we do in innovating our own city for the future, so, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm looking down at Councilmember Gordon. Did you have some more questions?
Just very briefly, I wanted to clarify that when I was talking about Youth Coordinating Board getting involved in the discussion and understanding it better, I wasn't implying any kind of time delay, or that we should derail anything in order for that to occur. It's April. It might be at least worth testing the waters and seeing, at least getting the Executive Committee to discuss it at one of our meetings. Thanks.
Okay. And Council President Johnson just had a question. Is the Minneapolis Public Schools self-insured?
Yes.
I believe they are.
Councilmember, or Chair Clinton, Councilmember Johnson, they are not self-insured, but they are undergoing that conversation. I know, I've met with their CFO and also with Mark Roth a couple times, and they are having that conversation.
Matt Council is self-insured, if anyone was wondering that.
Okay.
And Dakota County.
So a lot of our partner jurisdictions, larger jurisdictions have made that move, it appears. And I remember that frankly, from other reports that we've had on this. So I'm not seeing other questions from councilmembers. I wanted to make sure that we were able to exhaust those questions, because it is a very, this is a big moment, despite the fact there's a lot of preparatory work that happened to get, to get to this moment. And I want to echo the thanks that some of my colleagues have already shared to the staff, who really did a methodical job, I think, of kind of going through the work, going through the options. This work really started many, many years ago. And compliments as well to the Labor Management Committee that works on benefits. I have to say, kind of over the years of being on the council, I, this is kind of one of the most visible, I think, partnerships that we see often in kind of moments where we're making, you know, really important decisions that affect all of our employees, and it really gives confidence to the decision, I think, to know that there's a partnership in how to work out those details and make sure we have something that we're not still trying to work out after we make the decision of kind of how we, how we move forward. So I just want to say, I really appreciate the time that the Labor Management Team spends on going through all these details. One last question. So I didn't see and hear direction for returning to council, but I know that we talked about that. I had talked with the team about that. We had talked about the fact that this will be important to return back to council, and sometimes when you're going into a new election year, even if the people are the same, things change. And I said, it's probably going to be a little bit more up to the staff to remember you need to ask to come back to the council. But I just wanted to bring that up, that we did talk about that, so that we're able to kind of, probably after a year or so, be able to do a report back to council, make sure that we're hearing personally, how is it going, and those kinds of things. So I just wanted to bring that up. And I will go ahead and move this action, which again, is to authorize implementation of single employer self-insured medical plan effective January 2, 2018, and authorizing necessary contracts to effectuate the implementation of the self-insured medical plan. And any discussion on that motion? We have clerks weighing in on some sort of format issue.
Madam Vice President, there's a typo on the agenda. The effective date is actually January 1, 2018.
Okay. So that'll be a technical correction, a January 1. Anything else? We got the proper motion. Any discussion? None further than what we've already had, so on approval, please say aye. Aye, opposed, and that item is approved. So thank you all very much. Third item with a "a".
Chair Clinton and members of the committee, thank you so much. We really appreciate your support, and we appreciate the discussion we had here today and the opportunity to present this information, and we are excited that this is moving forward.
And I just want to make sure, I thank the Labor Management Committee, and I forgot to thank Hennepin County. I really want to thank you for taking your time to be here and be available to councilmembers, and of course, our consultants at Deloitte and Tush. Thank you for being here as well. With that, I believe that we have concluded with our discussion items. We now have some reports from committees, so we'll move forward on that. Thank you. Community Development and Regulatory Services with Councilmember Frye will give that report.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We have 18 items that are on the agenda moving forward for the Friday. Items 1 through 7 are land sales. Item number 8 is related to consuming alcohol in the Commons Park. Number 9 is a refunding of bonds and a passage of resolution approving the issuance of revenue bonds by the City of Landfall Village. Item number 10 is liquor and gambling, liquor business and gambling applications. Number 11 is the contract for Upper Harbor Terminal redevelopment. 12 is a contract for amendment for option agreement with United Properties related to the Nicollet Hotel Block. It's an extension. Item number 13 is the passage of a resolution authorizing submission of 2017 Hennepin County Transit Oriented Development Grant applications for Hennepin County. Number 14 is a grant acceptance for deed. Number 15 is the Great Streets Business District Support Grants, and that will actually be coming back to the committee. And we're, well, I'm sorry, it won't be coming back to the committee, but specifically, we're going to have a, there's a change for the Northeast Minneapolis Chamber of Commerce from $24,300 amended to $27,600. 16 is a rental dwelling license reinstatement. 17 is a license settlement conference recommendations relating to certics, which will, has been recommended to be held for two cycles. And then 18 is the 2017 Metropolitan Council of Ability Communities Accounts and Grants. Happy to stand for any questions.
All right, I'm not seeing questions. Next, we have Health, Environment, and Community Engagement. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing forward five items. For consideration, the first is passage of the short-term food ordinance amendment. Second item is approving a contract with the Family Partnership for Sexual Trafficking Victims. And the third is authorizing an agreement with Health Partners for school-based clinic insurance payments. Fourth is grant acceptance from the Mississippi Watershead Management Organization for summer interns. And the last is approval of the Minneapolis Green Zones Resolution. I can stand for any questions.
All right, I'm not seeing questions. Next, we have Intergovernmental Relations Committee, and for that, we had a couple of different items. One was, we had action taken to draft letters, one being to the Minnesota Congressional Delegation regarding the president's 2018 budget, and I believe Budget. And I believe that's attached to the agenda now, so councilmembers can review that. We wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to do that. The two other letters are in accordance with otherwise adopted policy positions for state legislative action. One is a letter regarding transit and transportation funding. And the final one is regarding funding of racial equity agenda items. And then item number two was passage of a resolution supporting continued funding for the National Endowment of the Arts and the National Endowment of the Humanities and opposing defunding of those agencies. And I'm not seeing questions on that. Next, we have Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management with Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. On Friday, we will have four items for approval. The first item is a revised comprehensive general emergency management plan. The second item is an agreement for jet patrols for the summer. Third item is cooperative agreements between the Minneapolis PD and other law enforcement agencies for the Super Bowl. And the fourth item is a contract with Hennepin County Community Outreach for co-responder pilot program. And I will take any questions.
All right. Not seeing questions. Next, we have Transportation Public Works with Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The committee will be forwarding 24 items for consideration at the full council. All items pertain to projects in the right-of-way, consistent with the season. Two items are about the PV Plaza and the Commons Park work. And then the only, and then, of course, a series of procurement approvals, all low bids. The only highlight I would point out would be the last item, which was the 2017 International Compost Awareness Week, which we recognize. And of course, there's a great report on all the activities the departments undergoing with that program. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Next, we have Ways and Means with Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ways and Means will bring forward 10 items for consideration on Friday. We have two legal settlements, two grant acceptances, low bid for a convention center lighting project, as well as two contract amendments. Of particular note is item number six on our agenda. It's a, it's the annual rollover of funds from 2016 budget to this 2017 budget. It follows a set of criteria that funds those ongoing projects. So that's, that's good news. We were able to do that. As well as item number seven, we're authorizing an issuance of an RFP for architectural and engineering design services for the Consolidated Office Building Project. And the final item was number 10. It's an agreement with the 2018 Super Bowl V2 Host Committee for a list of city services that will be repaid by the Host Committee. But that's the outline of the anticipated costs to host this world-class event, as well as what we're going to be reimbursed for. So just wanted to highlight those three items and look forward to any other questions.
Thank you. Finally, we have zoning and planning with Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have four items. The cycle from zoning and planning. Item number one is approving a small yard variance appeal for a garage on East Lake of the Isles Parkway. Item number two is a rezoning for a planned unit development on James Avenue North, adding a transitional parking overlay district. Item number three is a rezoning at 203241 Cedar Avenue for three residential uses within an existing building. And item number four is passage of an ordinance submitting our zoning code about regulations for fraternities and sorority.
All right, thank you. And with that, I believe that we have concluded with our agenda for today, and we are adjourned. Thank you.